Good morning, sorry for that interruption. I want to reestablish quarrel for the Kakaako meeting. Let the record reflect the following Kakaako members are present. Vice Chair Higa? Vice Chair Higa, are you there? I'll get back to him, member Paul.
Present.
Present.
Member Anderson. Member Anderson. Member here Ryan. Member Evans.
Present.
Member Sakora.
I am here.
So is Vice Chair Higa there? And this. Member Anderson. We have, we have six, we have.
We still have four.
So let us know when the Vice Chair Higa and Member Anderson joins us.
Okay.
This time.
Snell.
Mr. Snell there?
Please join in us now.
Let's fix now. Mr. How are you on? Oh, there he is. Mr. Snell. Are you on? Can you hear us? Excellent. Well, you can't beat that introduction, that's for sure.
That was disturbing, yes.
Perhaps it's deleted.
Yeah. Excluded. Okay.
It's okay now?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Shel, could you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm that the testimony you be providing is the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, our understanding is that we are currently not able to share screen. I guess because of that incident, it would be possible to allow my co-cop to share. Thank you. Yes. Yeah. All right, good morning, Mr. Schnell. We've been discussing the podium modification for blocks D and E. Is, in your opinion, are the requested modifications for block D and E consistent with the Ward Master Plan? HCD's prior consideration of the modifications as well as the vested rules?
Yes, the Ward Master Plan and HCD's decision and order approving the master plan, both contemplated modifications to the height setback for podiums throughout Ward Village. In addition, HCD's decision and order also found that these modifications would satisfy the standards and invested rules for granting the modification. And further, as discussed in detail in my written testimony, these modifications are consistent with other approved projects in Ward Village and in the Malka area. Specifically with respect to block D and block E, an increased platform height up to 65 feet and permitting the use of space within the view corridor setback provides greater volume within the platform to move the parking up and away from the street. This allows for increased pedestrian activity within block D and E along Oahu Street and Oahu Boulevard, including through street level commercial space with covered colonnades, a plaza area, landscaping, outdoor seating, planted berms, and pocket parks. The modifications also allow flexibility in the design of podiums to accommodate issues arising from climate change, including the elevation of the pedestrian areas in anticipation of sea level rise. And this is consistent with the Ward Master Plan, which includes a section on sustainability and notes that the climate change, that climate change is one of the drivers of Victoria Ward's sustainability strategy for Ward Village.
Mr. Schnell, focusing for a moment on the implementation of that sustainability strategy for blocks D and E. Did you review information, the applications and in the record of this proceeding regarding how blocks D and E consider the impacts of climate change?
Yes, I did. And the applications and the record reflect how blocks D and E consider the impacts of climate change. The applications, for example, include infrastructure availability reports from the project's civil engineer, Wilson Okamoto Incorporated. Wilson Oko, Wilson Okamoto Corporation. As noted, Wilson Okamoto evaluated the impact of sea level rise on the projects and determined that the projects will not be impacted by the 3.2 foot sea level rise shown in the Pacific Islands Ocean Observing System. Wilson Oko, Wilson Okamoto also evaluated the project's site drainage and low impact development. Civil engineer, Mr. Kawhi, also noted in his written testimony in this proceeding that the project resiliency part of both block D and block E's design, which include design solutions and best practices related to site level planning to mitigate against flooding and sea level rise, weatherproofing of utility elements, and black backflow preventer designs. The consideration of climate resiliency and sea level rise for both projects is graphically illustrated, for example, in the building and podium sections exhibits in both project applications. So in addition to the elevations that Ryan pointed out during his staff presentation, the top image of exhibit 31 of the block D application and the top image of exhibit 30 of the block E application show the podium and buildings are elevated from the existing elevations along both Oahu Boulevard and Oahu Street. For example, the pedestrian colonnade along Oahu Street, which is facilitated by the modifications, is about seven feet above the existing street level. Ms. Langsworthy stated in her oral testimony in this proceeding that the podium designs for both projects accommodate sea level rise while also effectively providing pedestrian access and activation. The letter from consultant RWDI noted that the wind study for both projects will consider structural wind loads and plating wind loads. And as you just heard, Mr. Darrow testified about the sustainable practices that will be incorporated into blocks D and E to mitigate effect against the effects of climate change. From a planning perspective and based on the information in block D and E applications and the information provided in the record, I believe that blocks D and E consider the impacts of climate change, sea level rise, and climate resilient development in the design and sighting of the buildings.
Now, Mr. Schnell, let's turn to the view corridor setback modifications for blocks D and E. What are the benefits of the view corridor setback modification?
The view corridor setback modification for D and E will create a continuous platform facade that better defines the edge of the platform along Oahu Boulevard and will provide for more flexibility for an interesting and aesthetically appealing platform design to complement the streetscape as depicted in the application. These benefits substantially enhance the aesthetics of the walkable active neighborhood contemplated by both the Malka Area Plan and the Ward Master Plan.
And in your professional opinion, Mr. Schnell, do these modifications adversely affect any adjacent developments you're using?
No. As proposed, the modifications are fully consistent with other developments in Ward Village and will not adversely affect adjacent developments or uses. Modifications are consistent, for example, with the Launu also along Oahu Boulevard. Given the importance of maintaining the tower orientation and yard setbacks to preserve established view corridors along Oahu Boulevard, the orientation of blocks D and block E towers will maintain the Oahu Boulevard view corridor as contemplated by both the Malka Area Plan and the Ward Master Plan and will not adversely affect adjacent developments and uses.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schnell. Chair Ishii, Victoria Ward has no further questions for Mr. Schnell at this time. He is available for any question.
Thank you. Members or executive director, do you have any questions for this witness?
Thank you.
Chair. Thank you. You may call your next witness.
Thank you very much, Chair Ishii. Our next witness is Joseph Perraro.
Morning.
Good morning.
Will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth for this particular testimony?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Perraro. Can you please state your name, place of employment, and position, please?
Joe Perraro. Place of employment is Perraro Choy and Associates Architects. My position is principal.
And Mr. Perraro, you provided written testimony for this block E modification hearing, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And you also provided written testimony for this block E modification.
Correct.
Chair Ishii, at this time, we rest on Mr. Perraro's written testimony for both projects and which has been admitted to evidence of exhibit D-10 and exhibit E-10 and is available for any question.
Thank you. Members or executive director, do you have any questions with this witness? Chair. So thank you, Mr. Perraro.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perraro. You may call your next witness.
Victoria Ward's next witness is Emilia Peach, who is appearing by telephone.
Is she the 294 number?
Yes, her number is, yes, that number. Okay, getting the 294.
Speaker, are you there?
Miss Peach, are you on?
Maybe she needs to hit pound six to unmute.
Miss Peach, can you press pound six to unmute, please?
Also, I think she's coming on the speech.
Miss Peach, can you please press pound six to unmute, please?
Also. If she's having technical difficulties, maybe call to the next witness.
Yes, thank you very much. Executive Director Nakamoto. Victoria Ward has no further witnesses, so due to the technical issues, we'd like to request if there are no objections that we be able to rest on Miss Peach's modification written testimony, which has been previously received at the evidence of exhibit D-16 and exhibit E-10.
No objection. Thank you. Further witnesses to call?
At this time, Chair Ishii of Victoria Ward has no further witnesses.
Great, thank you. So now we will take verbal public testimony. We will now hear testimony from the public. Speakers will be called upon to testify in the order in which they have signed up. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes each. Since each authority member has or will be given a copy of any written testimony that you may have already provided, please refrain from reading your written testimony and instead just summarize your comments at the time that you have available. When you are called, please clearly state your name and any organization that you may be representing. If you are attending virtually, please unmute your microphone and turn on your video. The first person that is signed up is Daniel Denell.
Good morning, Chair Ishii and members of the Authority. My, my name is Dan Denell. Testifying today as a member of the public. That said, my background provides context to my perspective. I served as HCD's Executive Director from 20, or 2004 to 2007. On my second to the last day as ED, after a turbulent time going through the Kakaako Makai development that ultimately was stopped by the passage of an act banning residential use Makai of Oahu Boulevard, I had an editorial board meeting with the Honolulu advertiser. One of the reporters made an offhand comment that, wow, I must be really happy to be leaving HCD. And I told him, I have the same passion and love for this agency as the day I started. And that's why I'm here today. I still care. I know the staff does, and I'm confident that all of you as members of the Authority do as well. The modification requests you have before you are consistent with past approvals and make for a better Kakaako. When I was with HCD, we started, we didn't approve it, that happened after I left, processing the Ward Master Plan. It included demolition and removal of the IBM building. But several years later, Victoria Ward, under new leadership and ownership of the Howard Hughes Corporation, not only preserved that iconic structure, but equally important into its plans and the community. Good planning is about adapting and modifying as necessary to effectuate a superior outcome. These modifications do exactly that. It's about being future minded. I'm glad the legislature is, like HCD, looking to the future. This act recently signed into law requires the Authority to consider climate change as part of its evaluation of developments in the Kakaako and Kalahe community development districts. When I was ED, yes, nearly two decades ago, climate change was on our radar screen. And in the matter before you, staff has, I am sure, as part of its due diligence and making its recommendations, asked applicant, as I've just heard, authority members ask how they're citing the buildings, the elevations of lobbies, the role of green infrastructure plays in addressing and adding to resilience and myriad other matters regarding climate change. Consultants and applicant, through their document submissions and testimony on the record, have shown they too have considered climate change. The development permit applications and modifications before you are worthy of support. It is consistent not only with HCD's enabling legislation found in HRS Chapter 206E, but it also complies with Act 221. It's additive to HCD's vision of a live, work, play, visit, learn community. I urge the Authority's approval of Victoria Ward's request for modification and the company development permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denell.
All right, the next witness is Christopher Delaney.
Oh, board members, Chris Delaney with Pacific Resource Partnership and strong supporter of blocks D and E projects. The modifications being sought by applicant increasing podium heights from 45 to 65 feet are consistent with 2005 HCD Malka area rules and already approved buildings in the Ward Village area. Blocks D and E projects will create more homes and stimulate Hawaii's economy, delivering economic benefits and job opportunities. These projects will create more construction jobs that pay construction workers a living wage with benefits, helping local families to afford Hawaii's high cost of living. Blocks D and E projects like Ward Village residential projects before it will further activate and transform the Kakaako community. 20,000 square feet of commercial ground floor shops and restaurants with outdoor seating along Oahu Street, broad sidewalks, public art, native landscaping, and cultural wayfinding signage. All will benefit the community. And I respectfully ask for your favorable decision on this project, on these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you.
Okay, the next testimony is Paige Miatoga. Mr. Miatoga? Mr. Miatoga, are you there? Well, we can come back to him. Next testimony, Jeff Masatsugu. Jeff Masatsugu?
Good morning, chair members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Morning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to testify. You have my written testimony. I can summarize it really quickly by saying, you know, it makes sense to grant the modifications requested here since it's consistent with so many projects in the district already. It'll help make the district a nicer district. I did want to address one thing that isn't in my written testimony, which is the requirements of Act 221. You know, it seems pretty clear that Howard Hughes has already done what might be required by the new act, so there shouldn't be any concern there. Again, we're in strong support of the motion and we respectfully request that the modifications be granted. Thank you.
Mr. Masatsugu, for the record, can I ask you to just state your affiliation?
Oh, sure. I represent for Labor Management Cooperation Funds. These are for the painters, union, the drywall tapers, the glazers, the floor layers, and all of their signatory contractors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next testimony is from Daphne Hargrove. If you can state your affiliation.
Hi, can you see me or hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, good morning, Chair. My name is Daphne Hargrove and I'm a local entrepreneur and freelance photographer. And I'm here because I have just a deep appreciation for all of the wonderful events that Ward Village has hosted for us. I'm, I'm there all the time, and so I've seen firsthand how it fosters community and supports local business and also how much the people genuinely appreciate and enjoy all of these events. It's also, I have submitted written testimony as well, but I just wanted to reinstate and say again what a positive economic impact and community impact I feel that Ward Village brings. And so I thank you for your time and I ask you for your support in their projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next testimony is for Ikka Rollins. Rollins.
Good morning, Chair Ishii and members of the HCDA board. My name is Ikka Rollins. I'm a resident in Ward Village at Anaha, testifying in that capacity. I'd like to offer my support for the proposed modification request for block D and block E Ward Village residences, as well as my support for the Diamond Head Park Plaza that's contemplated by this plan. I'm just testifying again in my capacity as a resident of the area. I love living in Ward Village in Kakaako. To me, it's unrivaled on Oahu with respect to convenience for everyday living and lifestyle. I'm very excited about all the new development and growth in the area, which has included, you know, the addition of a lot more families, restaurants, shops, and very walkable streetscapes that are being developed and opened every day. The requested modification is to block D and block E will allow for a new one acre community park, which I'm very excited about. Additional retail and restaurants along Oahu Street and elevated broad sidewalks with near landscaping, all of which I believe will greatly benefit the daily living experience again. Again, I just want to reiterate my support for the proposed modifications. Mahalo for your consideration. I respectfully ask that you approve the modification requests for these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next testimony is for Miss Yuen. Miss Yuen?
Miss Yuen?
Honi Miatoga. Honi Miatoga, are you on now? Miatoga? Brian Fujiaro? Is Brian Fujiaro on?
Miss Yuen is joining.
Miss Yuen? Yeah. Yeah, Brian Lee? Mr. Brian Lee?
Aloha, Chair Ishii, HCD board members, Director Nakamoto, HCD staff, and good friends. You have my written testimony. My name is Brian Lee with Hawaii Lassit. I'd like to emphasize a few things. First, as mentioned before, Howard Hughes and Ward Village has front-loaded delivery of their below-market rate units ahead of time and more than required, which is very unusual, you know, to build affordable units prior to starting on completion of all their projects. But also want to note that the sea level rise consideration and adaptation has been considered and addressed by all Kakaako Malka projects with KS, Stanford Car, Howard Hughes, in at least the last 10 years. I've been chair for about 10 years ago for some of those old folks who still remember. Just like Dan Denell, who testified, just like Jan Yakota, who said in written testimony, both were former executive directors. We love this place. Professional subject matter experts attest to it under oath that sea level rise and adaptation resiliency has been covered. State administrative rules process unfortunately requires that multiple public hearings, attorney general reviews, department reviews, branch reviews, governor's approval, legislative reference bureau, small business regulatory review board, and more public hearings be done before approval of Act 221 can actually legally take effect through administrative rules. The original vested Ward Village plan and Malka area rules would have even permitted up to 22 towers and always contemplated three towers at the ward center site. And there would have been, you know, many other towers that would have been built with an ever diamond head orientation instead of all 14 of the towers proposed to date having a Malka Makai orientation. Ward Village's approved invested master plans allow the owners to develop all 22 of their 400-foot towers by right without having to request any modifications. But to their credit, they wanted to do better. And it was really generous and visionary, I think, to propose less towers, 16 instead of 22 that were already allowed while balancing competing needs for tower orientation, street level activation setbacks, power spacing, view corridors, and community values and interests. You know, simply looking at one element like power spacing would have compromised some of the other important needs of the community. I think that for another developer, for example, that new one acre public park could have been located between the two new towers in order to maximize profit and privacy. You know, never mind anyone else, but with some sound modifications. You know, I think Ward Village is able to look out holistically for the interests of the entire community and the area. And the aligned block And the aligned block D and block E projects to not block other towers like Anaha and provide a wider view corridor from Maoka to Makai for Alamoana Beach Park. So, you know, maybe Lindsay, uh, and, uh, remember Mary Alice Evans remembers how it was. But, um, I'd like to, um, show what it looked like. See, this is the, uh, from two thousand and thirteen, the master plan, the anticipated development, the current development, you'll see right here where, um, Ward Center is, that there were three towers, you know, blocking Anaha and other developments. Um, so, you know, a lot was done to mitigate that. And, uh, and even older, um, even even older uh, design shows like horizontal buildings all along Alamoana Boulevard. So you can see that modifications can improve things. And, uh, I'll stop sharing because I know how dangerous that can be. But, um, you know, even older plans actually show the tower podium separated uh, from the ground level with pedestrian walkways and bridges forty five feet above level. So modifications, you know, are actually desired to make the entire project better rather than following things by rule. I think a couple of months from now, maybe, um, for decision makers on October fourth, um, some folks will probably not remember all of this. But if you do have time, you know, really go through some of the appendices and the, uh, staff reviews and the packet and look at them, and I think you'll find that things are improved a lot because the developers, the staff and board members did a good job applying and wisely modifying the vested Maoka area rules. And Ward Village looked past making the most maximum profit uh, in order to produce an even better result for the community at large. So mahalo, thank you for this time, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And for the record, Vice Chair Higa has joined us. A member here, I has to step out. Uh, next testimony is for Brian Fujiwara. Brian? Fujiwara?
Yes. Okay, hi. Uh, good morning, Chair Ishii and members of the HCD Board. My name is Brian Fujiwara, and I represent my local architectural firm, BKF and Associates. As a local architect who specializes in tenant improvements, retail and restaurant build outs, I can speak firsthand to the importance of these projects. Ward Village supports their tenants and the teams of designers and contractors who make small businesses come to fruition. I stand by my written testimony on why the modifications should be approved as they enhance and improve the streetscape and allow for a new community park. I offer my support for Victoria Ward Limited's proposed projects, the block D and E and the Diamond Head Plaza Park. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh, is, um, Ms. Yuen, are you here? No. Is Mr. Miyatoga here?
I'm sorry, are you looking for Mr. Yuen or Ms. Yuen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Na'o Yuen?
Oh, Yuen? Yeah, that's me.
All right.
Wait, wait, hold on.
I apologize. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, there I am. Sorry. Um, good morning, Chair Ishii, members of the, uh, HCD A Board. I'm, uh, Mr. Na'o Yuen. I represent Hawaii Food Service Solutions. We are a, my company is a local owned um, food service solution operator. So what we do is we acquire, refurbish, resell, repurpose restaurant equipment. So we're predominantly in the restaurant field. Um, I've had a number of customers in the, uh, within the Ward, um, village. And I've seen how, uh, Howard Hughes has been able to bring in food service operations from different, um, states in the United States and also different countries. It creates an exciting buzz for me. Is it especially somebody who enjoys food and and the various food operations? Um, given the work that I've been able to do, uh, Howard Hughes has been excellent to work with. And therefore, um, I strongly, um, stand by the written testimony that I have received or that I've sent in. And, um, please let me know that if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Yuen.
Thank you very much.
Next testimony is from Gino Suquena. This is Suquena.
Hello, Chair Ishii, uh, you guys, can you guys hear me? Okay, sorry. Uh, good morning, Chair Ishii and, uh, members of the HCD. Uh, my name is Gino Suquena. I am the executive director at the Hawaii Building and Construction Trades Council, which, uh, represents eighteen construction trade unions throughout the state of Hawaii, uh, in strong support of, uh, Ward Villages, um, block D and E projects and their proposed modifications. Uh, so hoping for you guys favorable decision. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other further public testimony?
No.
No, Chair. So there's no other, uh, further public testimony. I would like to proceed with closing today's proceedings. Council, do you have anything else to add?
Hi, Chair Ishii. Thank you. Victoria Ward has nothing further to add.
Oh, I'm sorry, but, uh, Member Paul, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, well, I have more of a comment, and and again, uh, it's a general comment. I was captivated by, uh, uh, Member Sakota's question about sea level rise. Sea level rise seems to be blanketing, you know, all development projects today. And of course, the sea is going to rise. You know, we know that question is, how long will it take to go how high? So, uh, in the way I kind of in my own mind framed what he was asking is, yes, there are regulatory benchmarks that are currently set by the government. And, uh, in the in the case of this project, uh, they have, you know, testified that they've met all regulatory. And so I'm thinking with respect to HCD specific properties that are in different locations that probably have different different benchmarks to set. And whether it might be necessary for HCD to maybe kind of take a look at going beyond the regulatory benchmarks and for this organization to take a look at setting, being site specific, setting benchmarks, suggested benchmarks, although they may not be, you know, legally defined on our own. I just wanted to throw that out there as as a question and a food for thought. Because this is going to keep coming up, sea level rise on everywhere in the world. So that's just my comment. I don't need any response to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Paul. Appreciate your comment. Thank you, Member Paul, and and it's something that we will, uh, probably have a discussion on in our general meeting coming up. All right, if there's, uh, no further public testimony, we will proceed with closing today's proceedings. Council, you have anything else to add?
Uh, Chair Ishii, Victoria Ward has no further, uh, evidence to present in this proceeding, and we request that the evidentiary portion of the hearing be closed for both blocks D and E.
Now, the authority would like to close the record for the hearing unless the council for the applicant is requesting the record be kept open.
Uh, Chair Ishii, Victoria Ward is requesting that the record be closed. All right.
The record for the public hearing is now closed. If there's no further comments or discussion, on behalf of the ECD Authority members and staff, I would like to thank you for your attendance. Council, you'll have until the end of Business Day, Wednesday, August ninth, twenty twenty three, to file the applicant's proposed findings of fact, conclusions of law, and decision in order with the authority. The public hearing on the applicant's requested modifications is now adjourned. The decision hearing on this project, Ward Village Block D and Block E will be held on Wednesday, October third, sorry, October fourth, twenty twenty three at nine AM. Thank you. And the time is now ten twenty four.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.